So I'll call the. Planning and zoning commission meeting. Okay. So.
Yeah.
Steve O'Jack.
Here. Here.
What matters in this meeting? So what was in this? Okay. Second body. We want to have any corrections? I. Paragraph is three twenty three. Um. For your line. Paragraph starts partially on town property. I think that's really the. Rest. This part due to the property line, part of the system sidewalk is partially. Really on the cap.
Yeah. That's true. Partially on the applicant account. Yeah.
Well, just so that's because the next sentence says an easement will be granted with town. Going cloud include the entire sidewalk. It's really just. Or. On the side. Granted to the town or the entire site. Page six. Page motion. In the first. Sentence of the motion says closure of public access are is beyond. Get rid of our here it is. Access areas. Which the public access area areas.
That's.
Okay, that's. And short term vowels.
Focus.
Yes. That's just right. I was trying to put the minutes as. But I. The opposed, any extensions. Motion is very good. That's the public communications. Public pressure. And there is a. Here. Subpositions. Bridge view subdivision.
Subdivision four lots in previously reduced the bond of public improvement. In one year maintenance period is over.
All make a motion that. Release the $3,000. On. A discussion. Vote on the motion to. For the bond release. Which is subdivision all those favors that. When I hang the opposed. The expansion motion is.
One of the changes that are in their packet are based on your discussion last meeting. Changes that were made documented are highlighted. Or create a color but computer shows. You have any questions? Let me know or. Add a different interpretation of what you're discussing.
No, I have a question. But. Um, now that we've come down to this text, is there a second review by the town attorney?
He fits the referral when you actually made.
I didn't see anything. Super controversial with what he said.
No, I mean, his main concern is the non-conformity.
No, we took. Yeah.
I just have one question. It's actually a wonder, Steve. Wouldn't we exclude CNCR? Did EMTC, MBC? Not even a special permit? If you had a mixed use type development. What was the idea? For example, if you screw up a. You could essentially have short term. It mattered. How would you have a short term? Unless something with grandfathered or.
Yeah, at the last meeting, you had sent out the RM business wanting to let the company owner. Association take care of it. You're right. You didn't talk about. Multi-headed development in mixed use. Other than holistic. And as it's written right now, that is not. There's, there's nothing concerning how many short term. Government.
It's not a residential. I mean, residential.
But the owner would. They're.
Oh, that's right.
That was internal. To theoretically other. Just thinking about it. I'm sure it worked. Maybe the possibility.
I mean, there would be a property owner. I mean, if they are apartments, they're just. You know, and there would be rules if they are condos. But they won't. But they will have the power. Okay, so let's go with that. Right, right. It's just not the actual layer.
Can I ask a question about eventually trying to get people that are grandfathered in? Into the cycle? And is that? Any way possible?
Not with zoning.
Not with the town.
That's why we want to read something. Figure out something.
Yeah.
So this is. Everybody's going to say that I've been doing this for five years.
And if there is a concern or. enforcement officer would ask. Would think to say yes to it.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes.
Which is.
That would be like.
Yeah, but that would be a.
Right, right. Another way, right, another thing.
This raises one other question. So grandfather. Airbnb. Tells someone else that grandfather's.
It runs with land. Expansion of it. They're putting on an addition that is going to be for a short. Need to capture that.
Wait, non-conform.
And then.
It occurred to me that the state registration. It just did. Yeah, you just made no shortage of people. And you're going to say registry? That's the word. Right, there's supposed to be. Right, I don't want this. It will say well. They weren't there. Yes, a couple. I have a couple of them.
Age. That's actually. I. Arm. Good. Think on the next. Paragraph. Call them.
Right, in that section, it references one unit or two unit dwellings.
On the reservation.
Well, in one instance.
Yeah.
Single.
Well, that's what the. Who is the location of the short term on the short term? Is in the drawing. In the drawing of one accessory. They're both one. That's why I think. The so. And in the next paragraph, on the next page. Free. There's the owner of the lot must have. If the lot is leased. Real lease. And they have a short term. That's our short term right here is solid. These apartments. Somebody leases. For year.
The second.
That's the extent. Yeah. Because that's sorry. Or get a doctor down, I have to. From at a state. Only. Well, but he has done for the resident. But that person who enters. Ask that. Resident, yes. Primary residence. This once a year. Yes. Is it? Yes. Or if you leased it for a year. Five years. Yeah. You have to meet that resident. That's. That's good. Something that rent a house and then sold it out.
Oh. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but we're not the owner.
Not the owner.
But it would be a resident.
Who just asked for the resident. Be interested. He. No, because if it happens to. It's somebody who res.
If the person who owns the property is planning.
Yeah, it would be after that. They are a person that's leased for a year. He wants to go on vacation. Do anything.
I just do ten. I think our. That's what I got. So we need to tell you what we want to say is the owner or leasing of the lawn. All of the same. That's the best. In that defeat, what we want to do. But it's that. What we want to do is make sure the person who's doing this lives there. That's all we want. No, a lot of people who live in the house don't know that. Friend. Right. Actually, there is. It could be 99 year lease. If I can figure an objection. I think so. As long as that person is. Turns down. As long as. So he's the resident by definition.
Lessy.
Obviously. More. Like you said. This is less here, so you have to make sure.
Well, I think the must have their primary residence. Covers. That covers what you're saying. You've got it covered. And whether they're leasing it or owning it, that's their primary. That's right. But I think that's the thing that we want to do is that it's not. That it's not somebody who's renting. A property from someone else and has their primary residence. All right. He can't, he can't do that, right? So I think that what John just said is accurate in that. Provided that that person is a resident. No. No, no. It's the owner. Yeah, I think that covers it. It was a. The owner or less say. That's what I'm saying. The law must have. A residency. That, yeah, that's right. That's why I'm sorry. If I sounded confused, I was. That's the way that is. If, if. Let's see. Is. Not the owner. Right. Obviously, he's not the owner. Well. Are you saying that lessy gets paid a short term? Yeah. Yeah. If you're there, but it has to be, he has to be the primary investor.
Well, that's every. No, but keep in mind that there's, there's the application process. Right? You know, they would have to apply to do it in these zones. Owner has to sign the application.
Oh, wasn't the whole point of saying? Box around. Or is involved? And the owner is on the property or sees the property every six months. This is not somebody in Florida or California that buys a piece of property on gravel street. And forever rents it out.
Oh, that was. How that is a resident, have to be resident. And that.
Not if it's a lessy. Then. I was saying, no.
It says it right here.
There's two parts to it. What is that? It's a resident. But being rental, I see, and the resident. Must be a resident. I thought I heard the term for, not and. Your owner or resident. Maybe the. Oh, oh, but you don't need to be an owner. We're saying. Oh, it's. An owner. But. I wanted to make sure it was a best. Didn't care about. We're using. Or banding that. Then corporation might own the house. So long as there's a resident there. You have a neighbor, you have somebody who cares about that. They're responsible. Take this. When I have a place of. They have, they own the house. Sure. It's. Or a. They moved to Florida, they're residents, they're good. Lives there. Probably happy. Same. But it has, you've got to have. And you would be, but you're always going to be the primary. That's the thing. That's the key, right? The person who's doing it must always be, whether they are. The landlord or the owner and living in it. That would be. Of that. Yes. I just don't know what we're gaining by. Phone in less.
What are your delivery? Here.
There's actually a lot of those leased houses. Vivistic. But aren't there leased houses? Right now, but there could be. But I think.
I think there always has. People probably want. You're just. House out on the. Yeah. On an end. For shortage, right?
Well, who, who? That's just. That's going to be, well, I'm not saying that this is negative, but someone who does it really academically. It would. Well, they go September to May. Resident renting that. Eight. Lessy is renting. Is the resident. Particularly good in students will be. Rented, rented the other three ones out for short term rentals. That's where, that's where it's. Could. That's.
And we want that.
Yeah, I love being a college candidate. I don't know who should probably. Well, that's what a lot of. I see that on my. That's what. But that essentially is a sub. Yes, yeah. On short term basis. Which. And I don't know if that's what. We're.
Right. And you. That without.
Yeah, absolutely. You can do that. This doesn't spell the devil. It's funny. And it. And the house. That's the, as you say, three months rented out. Three. Three consecutive three month periods, if you like. But I can do that. This is not. You do that today. Somebody. Want to short term. And so. If this that person have seen. By. Well, the same attention to detail, you know, is that this is not his property, he leasing his property. And now he's going to essentially create a short term rental at least property. Just to see that is being as good situation as the actual owner. That, you know. These things is property. I mean, whether the guy leases it for six months or a year or two years or five years, he doesn't have a vested interest in that property.
Well, whoever owns the property.
He may not know, he may live in California. The owner rents it, hell days, hell of a city, rents their properties. The agent, the agent lives there. That is this. Do that. We're saying that's okay because as long as he lives there. Ain't, manages it, we're saying. That to me would be. More difficult situation there. If I was a young person. I become an agent, I have to. That should not. I think it's a little looser than you had it originally thought. Some people who rent a house can take care of the house because if they don't, older will reject it. Or maybe the first, I think it's lots of nice places. He comes. They'd be responsible. Well, I guess we have to take devil's advocate as soon as the worst case scenario. Yes. That's the place, town center. Yeah, it's right. You achieve placed and they, they, they're destroying it in the meantime, they're making problems too. That's the story. I mean, if all the other rules still kick in. Still know who that person is. They lived there for six months. It's not XYZ Corporation or Terrell Flanders. I know it's a. Yes. That's so. But there are the other restrictions you have. One thing I do want to just caution. Hard to. We're writing zoning regulations, but a scenario and everything. We're going to have pretty hard. Home zoning perspective, so. We've had very few. Unregulated. Now you have special permits, some conditions. Just what do you think about that?
I'll agree. I think it's the worst case scenario, and I'm saying the likelihood of that becoming a widespread problem. Well. Honestly, somebody. You have other issues. You have. A renter right down there. Right off Route one. Got it. Not because of this.
One of the points is I think we do have a lot. Parts is I think you. Just people know that we're under. I say we have a number of. I need it always. You have people showing up here. And we keep thanks to ours. Yeah, so there are forty people in this world. Yeah. You know, so I don't think. And I, I cautiously disagree with the fact that, you know, when they said that, you know, plan for worst case scenario. I do. You know, every, every decision we make, we think what could go wrong? So we got to think, got to think what could. Without being restricted. That's my turn. You know, by making good law. To frame. So, you know, when we say, you know, those things can't go higher than this, or things have to be spaced out. Why? Because it could be two inches because we allow it. We don't want it to be. When we, we feel discovered downtown. That, you know, with the new building that went up next to the steps. That there was, you know, we'll say a slight hole in our regulations because of the zero property line. And because of that, building could get taller. And everybody was like, oh, so in that case, they leveraged our own regulations to the max. Made the building as tall as they could. We go all like, maybe we should paint that up.
Well, they didn't. This is conservative.
Well, yeah, but those were words and they leveraged it and so the building got built. You know, and we tweaked it, right? Yeah, so. I do think about, you know, well, what happens if? I agree that you should always think about what's going to happen. All of our movements may get against. We're going to have. incredibly over really.
We're going to have incredibly overly restrictive set of rules. We don't need to make the point, just weighing all sides. Well, I think that was, I mean, we tried to make these rules as concise as we could. I think that helps in regulation.
And with this regulation, I think you're trying to be. That's.
I would disagree, I think we're trying to be very precise. We're not trying to. Have a precise framework. It's been told to us, we didn't have a precise framework, that's why we created. Okay, no, it's not.
Why don't we leave more lessy in there? Because don't, don't forget, this goes to public. You know, there's still time to hear other folks, you know, have concerns about.
Yeah.
Still the ability.
Put those words in there. Things. And we can have another.
Absolutely.
Bring it up. Yeah, I mean, this is new to me, so I didn't really.
And then when we get to. Questions. It's the way it's. Not what they're trying. I, I think what something that I spoke here. Where after the first. sentence. At eight to nine. Think if we go a little. A residential use district in addition. Even those words. And had a start, just they have all conditions. This is. Yeah. For that, no, I wouldn't have this, that would call. And then A would start at exterior.
Yes.
Then. I understand why. The input. So. All events, other than, and. All of the plans. Then. Most.
Maybe we don't need that.
Oh.
I, I mean, temporary events are defined. You know, and there's a.
But we want to pay on the short term rental. We have, we're defining, making it mandatory that you might guess. For the short term rental. Wedding group over there. That has to be treated. Temporary, which should be protected in the world.
It isn't the last sentence, say it all.
Yeah.
I agree, that's also by the.
In the other ones. But here's maybe. We don't worry.
Right. Well, just believe that's, that's first.
All events other than renting. Eliminating. But you may want to put reference.
Correct.
Into that. Right. Saying that. Saying if they have. But if you were the owner.
This is also boosted by the occupant.
Right, that was to address the town attorney's concern that the owner wouldn't be able to have a temporary.
Right.
Right, yes.
I'll be short.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
That would have great.
Yeah. Oh, no, but I mean. I don't know that today. Somebody wants to have.
Concern about temporary events by the owner or by the.
No, just. I turn around, okay. Think this one.
Yeah.
That's what it's saying that. They're not allowed in this.
Or, or in the RU.
Right, by the.
By this.
Right, by the person who is a short term. Correct. But the property owner.
This is only.
That's right, that's right. That's right.
Probably smoking hairs. Of which activity. That's my thought, that's just. That's why.
It's large now, it takes two things, when they rented a house for a weekend. They all just stayed there and didn't count. Yeah, they didn't rent a tent, that was not with anyone.
Well, that's one event. That's what I thought the first section kind of was of that situation. But. Saying that we're calling those temporary events.
It was. So temporary events are, you know, rides, shows, games, like fairs, right? As well as special events such as weddings, large parties, such as gatherings, the property is rented for a P and not. Over there and or on the ground by the president's district. So. So you could have a. Party in a tent at your house, your daughter, don't have to follow any of the rules.
We want.
Renters, that's right.
Well, shake side, we're at least two acres.
Right.
Well, maybe that's. Including temporary events. It would be temporary. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I.
We have a term though. Describe the term.
Exactly, if it's something going on inside.
I guess, oh, we're not, we don't care.
Right. Right, it's the tent.
Do you think that?
I, I think so, I think it's important.
Oh, no, I mean, it's, it's sorry. They'll make it, to go back to. So what I'm hearing, he's saying owner now. Or saying owner. For this as well. You know, or does that?
This only refers to the short term.
That would be an honor. Oh, right, they could have.
They could have a short. I mean, the temporary.
Whether they were an owner or the best, just like they could. This is just for short term.
Renters, the more restricted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably want to. But. Next. Nice. Yeah. Of course, something acoustic.
More precise. More precise.
Ready? So we're ready to go to.
Well, I thought you were going to share this with.
But at least we won't get accused.
Well, not getting affected, right?
I, I mean, you want, you want to put together an application.
At the same time, are you look, are you looking at the same time to send it off to the town council?
I, I think it makes sense, you know, just like, I mean, we're planning on, yeah, I just put it on their radar.
If they choose not to.
We can send it.
Exactly, yeah, I think so.
It's over.
Well, I, I think the last time the council had discussed this matter. I thought the planning zone issue, then move forward, and then once you came to some conclusion. And your results off to them. See if they're going to take action with coordinates. But.
Well, we're going to try to get it.
That's. Now, what we just, my point was, was a little different. Timing issue, right? So we could send it off to them, the expectation of having coordinates, right? But we also can just move forward, I think is what we're doing here, and with an application. Then zone.
We want it in there.
And we, we will, we'll foster what you, we need to correspond, coordinates if you choose. The mechanism will unfold. Or anybody creating rentals will be in a residential area.
Right, will be as it is.
Right, so that's completely under our curvy. Yeah?
Be in the awareness.
Yes. And I guess subsequent enforcement. Boxes.
Yeah. Yeah. It's.
Maybe some of our cases. On my personal. Oh, it's property back.
Oh, there are.
Yeah. This. They're selling properties.
That's my group. Well, it's price. Price. Next. That's all we're for. You want to.
Look where.
That'd be the. Of Eastern Connecticut.
Consensus is to.
And then we have, the actual.
It's like three years, two years.
Maybe a year and a half. I mean, yeah, there is a lot of discussion. Higher course.
Yeah. Prior to this. After.
Or. Going in some more different. Yeah, but.
Who are prohibited. And no, I. What we're saying is, I find those towns, everyone, they lose ownership of that. That would be prohibitive. We choose to be more precise language, we part of zone. Now, the matter of if they're competing for it, matter, we made that more precise. Because I believe that our stance is always that, that short term rentals don't appear to be. Part of our zoning regulation. Now we've made, that we do everything in precise. I think there's a big.
Well, I don't think about it.
Yeah.
New York City's. And.
I think your regulations are very precise, I also think. Which is okay, that's what you're looking for. Doesn't that mean?
Because they're not. Quick rental. People doing that plan today, buying property for use, not.
And that's, that in the view of the convention, if I could speak for everybody, is a commercial venture. And that's why I'm saying that it's necessarily a bad thing that you. It's okay, it's very, I think he's very precise. Habitive from moving forward as opposed to right now. It's not great.
But they're destroying the.
Anyway, I think we go around.
Yeah, no, no, the thing is, is just. Any single thing that we did is a different one.
Yes.
That is. This does, this is by no means excluding them. They're still grandfathered in, they're going to be able to operate the way they were. That's, well, but I mean, the ones that exist already are, we have not control.
I think this will substantially slow down the competition. New short term rentals and get back to. I miss. I think the first advertisements here being B or B R B O. Hey, you have an extra room in your house, do you want a rest? I, I think you're trying to get back to the frameworks, but yeah, not saying. And down. That's your goal, I think you're.
Now. I have a lot in the church, so. Right. I'm working on some business. Applications. Always both.
All right, all right, so. Again, we just wanted to touch base with everyone talking about the. The next P O C D has to be adopted by June of twenty twenty seven. So we have a little bit of time, but we also don't want to squander that. There's a number of things that we want to get some additional back on. Regarding first talk of three times about how we are beginning a. Kind of a new program looking at outreach engagement, want to start that, get that process moving well ahead to that any. That process. R F P. Generally, the rewrite, the development is not a rewrite, development for each of the new plan of conservation. The best guess is about eighteen months on that whole process. So we have more time than that. And I think we're starting way ahead of the curve. Of trying to have these studies with all of you to just gauge, what are the important pieces? From the commission, then as we also develop our outreach engagement, there are a lot from. As we're starting to practice. I'm here. But, you know, again, we got some feedback back in early 2020.
Some people want to feedback.
Yes. Was there a format that you're looking for in your area?
Go around the table.
Okay. Well, I mean, it. Well, I mean.
Kevin's gonna say, is there a particular format, is there any area of present P O C that you'd like us to comment? Or do you see us, I mean, vision, what we see? Look at all the.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer not to get into, you know, well, I think this recommendation already finished and maybe even. Let's do big.
They're not really prescriptive.
Exactly.
This will be looking at ten thousand.
I never had to go first, so can I go? Um, so the one thing that I noticed that, you know, I have to say, I found energizing in my work. Others, that we embrace our mission very well. What I don't understand is our ability with zoning have an impact on P O C D and on us. Only because of the other frameworks that I've worked in my life, there's a direct connection. So for instance, if someone were to choose to go six hundred apartments downtown Mystic where it's not allowed to, and the conservation says, oh, this is a protected area, whatever, this is a conserved area, that can't even be considered, but in today's world it can, right? Normally, I will deal with frameworks that have that. It just doesn't seem like they have their document, we have our planning zoning, it doesn't seem to be a connection. We could have the same vision, but what is those connecting fibers in P O C D? I just don't understand. I read.
There's a very big. Anything within the zoning has to be consistent with the plan of conservation development. So. I'll think of something, you know, ridiculous, somebody can come in and pose a wind turbine downtown Mystic. The zoning doesn't allow that. Can they request to change the plan of conservation development? Future land use map to say, no, we want wind turbine. Request that, request a zone change, yes, but then if you, I think zoning commission approves the plan of conservation development, you approve the zoning, it's like, no, we don't think that falls within the intent of our P O C D is or was or was going, or is it? Always. Those consist of six hundred presidential units, we referring to.
Maybe we want nine hundred presidential units, also Mystic Oral School type of location, right? But in order for that to take place, we'd have to change our plan of conservation. And we'd have to change our zoning as far as that. So that connection is there. So it's kind of like why people run through a PM first, and then they go through their, say, their development or. I don't think that was well understood. For a lot of towns, people go, you know, just any general questions, I don't think we have really a two part. And my only other issue is if we gave comment on, say, this Oral School. Did conservation mission to date also provide that this potentially would be on foot with what they've done? They've done, what their plan is, what their framework is, they issued something, did it come before them as well as zoning?
I don't think so, no, it didn't. It didn't, and the future land use map that was included in your package. Uh, that should be, you know, basically your vision for the future based on the words in the document. Right? And, and so that, that also brings in whatever the conservation commission is doing with their plan. It will bring in the affordable housing, it will bring in the age friendly plan, all of those documents will be reviewed and their recommendations, if you all feel appropriate, will be included in this document. This is almost an umbrella over other commissions work.
If I can just expand on what you're saying. So the first word, plan, it's a plan, and then strike out just now of development. So it's the going forward plan for the town. If we say we need more commercial real estate. That is the vision that the commission has, and that's what our zoning should kind of try to strive for in the future. When somebody comes around and says, I got to please the land, and I'd like to convert it to Marshall, we say, hey, that's consistent with the plan of development. And most of the rulings we have, we say it is consistent with. Zoning. Absolutely right. But conservation does not. Conservation Commission, they have, everybody in town has. Yeah, everybody, everybody in. That's the town. And they will have.
I don't know, the conservation commission is an advisory. They really, although they can make recommendations to you for the group, just as the economic development, advisory group. They can come up with plans, strategies, how you take their plan, strategies. What you're doing, you approve. Only. You then approve the site plan. So the conservation commission. I don't want to say they don't have a role, they have a role in the public process, what we do, and they bring recommendations to people, it's your role.
And like. You know, he said, I would like to be in on this. He did. And.
Gave us.
And sure. They want to be in on this discussion because this is the ten. Yes, yes, yeah, so this is ten years looking out, what do we want on town?
And it's not just the commissions that want to be involved in this, the people abroad who have to be, you know, people who have no idea what you all do, you know, they need to be involved. Their town.
One of the things that we're trying to do with that agent strategy, I mean, right now, we generally have the same people unless there's something proposed in, you know, Joe Smith's neighborhood. We get the same people that you all, I mean, informed people, members of Asian Commission, Park County Commission, citizens that are very involved. But outside of maybe those fifty people, not getting, getting to thirty nine thousand. How can we do a better job, you know, sure, we're getting feedback from all of them. As best as possible. Don't care about it. The only one to talk about it on this one, but we need to get some level of engagement for their understanding.
If we really look at the conservation mission as just an advisory, and with the ability to weigh in, really without any weight though, they can say something, but without any weight, then that's really what their role is supposed to be, as you say, just like the economic.
I mean, they have weight in the sense that they are a commission of the town. But they don't have any formal regulatory weight. Decisions. You know, their advisory opinions mean something if, when we approve an application or sign an application. We look at the record, oh, the conservation commission recommended X, Y, and Z, and they said to do this, the economic. That adds to the record. Helps, you know, you from an, uh, want to prove, sure. But really, the buck stops here for them.
We have. And then the P O C D is not written absolutely. Open to. So my only other.
Yes.
Sure. It's getting more precision as far as their role is. In human basis, that people could understand where they get it in. But it's unlike other frameworks. I get what.
I love. Councillors.
When I change the framework, I change thing. Take it from a very high level, find if there's error. Some kind of search, do we have that gap? Everyone said here, we don't really have that. Five zero. The big vision.
And that vision will then set your policy, you know, where we get into a lengthy document. Start getting so precise and descriptive. Oh, we got a cross reference again in this section. Will not work, what in the big overarching?
I'll have to admit, to spend more time with your black man. But we have a values difference. Things we want to do. Could we get fifty percent?
That's one of theirs.
We used to do that periodically.
That's.
Well, that's been hard.
Yeah, so you mean all of the nine new crew recommendations? I mean, we can do that for you, I guess, I've been probably over.
Over.
Yeah, but some of, but if you look at some of the recommendations, they're, you know, it's not a dump this type of regulation, it's being broad, things like.
Policy.
Yeah, you know.
Improves the parking.
Exactly, continue to work with.
Address sea level rise.
Yeah, yeah.
When's the end data? I'm really sure.
Yeah, so, you know, recommendation number one is probably to go and see how well we did, and if we can clean up the old ways.
Yeah. Definitely something that's hard.
That's, that's obvious. Beyond that, you know, I agree that it's a long time. There's a lot worse. But I think even at higher level and big picture.
And, you know, understanding that it's okay if five percent are goals and aspirations. That's all it is. Also recognizing that in ten years, some of your ideas and goals will change. So there might be, you know, how much time do we want to spend on? That's exactly what we want, what are the big things you want? Not that we want to improve what was done in the past, but I think really the biggest thing we want to get out of this next. What are our major issues? You know, is, you know, and that's what, it's kind of a little bullet list at the bottom of that memo, I'll get into. Need just in the future. Need new analysis. About employment trend, what's that gonna then have an impact on? Some of the other studies we've done recently, or housing plan, the housing market analysis. And what, taking the numbers and the data from that, how much of that do you want to address? What do you think we can address? There's a lot of pieces to that, other big structure needs that we should be talking about. Transplantation, stormwater, sea level rise, you know, retrofit, billions. And not getting too specific, and then, you know, any other large trend. You know, there will be a few eight hundred pound gorillas in.
We're, yeah, ready, done, data centers, cannabis, and short term rentals.
Yeah, but I think probably one of the gorillas John's talking about, what to do with these closed facilities that don't match them. And it's not just these. There's a, there's, there's schools. There, there, there are some other, there's Shepherd of the Sea up on Gunji War, I mean, you know, looking at, thinking at that and coming up with some sort of strategy to deal with those types of things that, you know, it's unlikely that that center will become, you know, two acre zoning, I mean, two acre housing lots, right? Maybe, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, but I think it's something that the P O C D needs to consider. What are we gonna do with all of these healthy?
And will P O C D will be driver for that? The, the.
Yes. Right, it will, it will be. It will, it will be.
It won't be a mechanism of the application.
Right, and it doesn't have to be super specific, it could be that the town needs to address reuse of these properties in a special plan. The P O C D can address the whole town hit upon issues, and one of the recommendations of what was the information set. I think that's probably the biggest area to come from. Is to do a site specific comprehensive planning effort for that property. I mean, what, you know, residents, the butters, the community at large, and state through, you know, intensive on planning process, figure out what the future property could be. Needs to, you know, again, kind of.
Right, yeah.
But if you said something like that, it would need the door open, then a huge effort that this group can initiate. Saying, all right, council, finish the P O C D, it's twenty twenty six, now we want to do that site specific analysis that we asked for. And not to get too far down the rabbit hole, one of the things we generally do in a lot of use is we adopt a P O C D and say, great, we're done, we don't have to do anything else. Now we have to implement or do the special projects that. A lot of time. Mystic or, or other things, but if you want to identify some big issues in the we need to tackle this, and this need to be a effort driven by the plan. Call that out. Then the next year, I can go ask the council for money, do that study. And we can do it. If that's, if that can, I want to, you know, many. And that's all to you.
That's one of the questions. So, for instance, in the school, they won't go forward into these use stuffs like that specifically in the P O C D.
No, no, but for example, on the future land use map, all of the schools reflect this. Mostly residential. That likely what's going to happen? Maybe, maybe not, I mean, it's that sort of thing, so if, if on the future land use map, the closed schools are shown as something other than institutional, which is what they are right now, it kind of shows your forward looking that, you know, maybe this one should be multi-valued. You know, maybe this one should be a higher density residential, that's the sort of thing that needs to be reflected on that.
Because like, for example, Pleasant Valley is zoned, you know, all that name. Or allowed from all that name. Seeley School allows from all that name. Other schools are just gonna have the base, you know. What's the zone?
Butler, for example, Jerry Morris. Yeah, those are all residential hotels.
I respect, I respect. Plus the valley being pursued by the. That is great.
No, no. Right now, there's, there's a lot of options, there will be. Yeah. Yeah, not to my knowledge, but I think go too far down rabbit hole. The council had redone their all the reuse property policy. Any of those excesses, we are understanding now, what's our appeal? Yeah.
Anyway, it could probably be.
Yes, I think that the P O C D has breaks me that. World's documents, so we keep going, those, we not used, you know, we bring it up with, oh, what's that, oh, it says that. And then, of course, we need to do all the. Sure. Have a few. Think a lot of this. Be nice to have a little. And one thing we don't see to do where we all skin, but all in different segments. Statements. But that way. But even if you were a young voting person, wants to be to say, you know. The forty. And, and we, I don't. Know the things. We certainly have a lot more, you know. I don't know, maybe a temporary job or something, but. Because it's turned out to be free.
Can he be something?
One of the things. About will they pressure? Couple of train stations. But that's going to. Right? But how do we have a document? All this now?
You know, this is in documents.
Sorry?
This is in documents, actually, it is right now. Absolutely. Find it. It's a future planning, I think, saying. When, at such a time as the train station goes here? Because. For the be there, doing this long term. He's a glory study, we want to see that. You're playing for. See, how you can accommodate this.
Control. I think we got a.
We're only getting one.
Well, if it happens, it doesn't happen.
You know, and, and those are some of the things that. We. That the state did that high level study. We would want to do something. That's where, again, those same examples, if we're in, say, racing train station downtown, we want to plan for it. Want to recognize. Here actually, we only see that, right? Potential corruption and everything else, but what else can we do to plan for it, identify the policy, work with the state? And get that ready, I mean, zoning perspective, we're ready. If we are a N T C zone, it's essentially a M U T zone. All it's good. Train station.
That's. That will also need something. Downtown area. That's. Station. A lot. A lot of people. And you don't have. A start. But I think the thing, one thing should be that I think in the area, we already have this. How do we make downtown? That's. Something that I think that need to like really focus on. Because I know when Mr. All Schools Go Night, I heard up and down this line. This were on drastic drive, we would be all in. And what, and, and but that, that goes, that sort of like comes off of the conversation. And because we can get a train station down here. Or, you know, other. Have a boat work or. Sidewalks and icicles and everything else. You're very vibrant there. That for me is where we should really try. What process? Trying to get us, well, because there's a lot, I, I believe a whole northern part of San Antonio. Lot of it above Route one eighty four.
That's right.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of areas that we, I mean, I would like to see. More residential, single family homes or, or, you know, two family or. But I think those kinds of things, but we're not going to. And a lot of areas in the. Lower part of Rock and Southern. Already. Pretty developed, you know, there's not a lot of room that could, they're not getting. Five hundred house developments in Rock. They're not going to happen. But I think that we could. And I don't even know what kind of property there is in downtown, but. But, uh, you know, that is, to me, is where I think something for that. Federal thing, then. You know, they don't run a lot, but then also come down a little bit. Pick those places, this is where a rail station would work for us.
I don't have a clear picture of what that house. Yeah, there are a lot of them. We even go stay there.
Many houses as we.
Income housing, all that, you know, I said, no, what the. Good analysis is. People say, oh, we don't need one. There are so many people just like.
So this you can have questions on housing and housing needs. Even housing. And reading.
I think that's what this is not low income, it's horrible stuff.
But I did read the point.
And, and actually having them up. The numbers are going up. And just even. And that's something that, you know. Yeah, specific things like that. There might be presentations on them or we can. First become the option. Some of those really. Like, issues like that.
We're tired, we're still not aligned with the census. We talked about the, trying to get the P O C D aligned. Census taken so that we can use the data from the census going forward. And we would align ourselves, but I think we're still getting.
We're good.
Uh, yeah. You know, there's so many up to date. Data sets that are out there now. That. We'll get a little bit more precision with the census, there's a lot of. You know, it's like. These are the best data suppliers from tracking.
A little scary.
Yes.
Where do you go to show? Is there a downtown business? Like, uh, owners of those properties, or is there any, any like organization that they? Like pressure. I mean, the thing is, is that I, I, you know, how these things happen. Everybody has a plan. You know, feel something. And they don't always, uh, things don't always come. But we can, we can sort of like set the stage and then, I think that's what we get.
But isn't one other areas like that? They have their own, they have their own fields, they do all this feedback.
And their own. They do their own economic.
I wasn't sure if they had their own. Unfortunately. Right, no, this, this is the plan for now, that's right.
Right.
But one thing I really like, when I look at this map and when you think about, I was. You would all know. It was out of data, I think. Considerable, you know, so many things have changed now, it's just. Incredible, it's so busy. Sometimes I used to go to the G I S side and say, just give one certain players, we can just play on something. Rather than have nodes. What costs? Somehow, maybe you do that, but somehow simplify it. So I think all those, look at this. Really understand their role in the harbor. I mean, I think I know a lot about the whole. Use it, like.
Yeah, it's everything, it's everything.
Well, it's too much, so out of date too, so I have to keep adjusting almost everyone. Who needs recent dollars? Right, going by example. For already.
Digital map. But why?
Exactly, why?
Well, you know, and the thing that we can always do is. Twenty twenty six comes around, gets adopted. Two years goes by, the commission can say, hey, we want to make a change. P O C D. We want to update the future land use map, this, this and this. Something we can do, we just haven't done that.
Which.
It's a process. It, it's a process.
Right.
The last place I worked in Brown was Paul. I'm brings it. We would change that.
We had to, right?
No.
No, but in order to approve development that wasn't consistent, right?
Correct, yes, there, there was a, it was a huge requirement system. So if someone came in with a proposal that was inconsistent. I'm like inconsistent with our P O C D. My new commission would say, well, we think this is a good idea, so let's change that future. And abuse. And we'll change the zoning. Next, and we'll change the zone designation. There, who was all the recognition. Town council. Proves, but. Similar process. If we want to change things, because that is a living, breathing body. It will be changing. There are big things that we want to address.
But it, but it hasn't today.
We haven't changed that.
You just articulated what I was trying to say. Is that you need this enablement somehow between that and. Does, that takes much more vibrant. That's it.
That was another day. And sixty.
It's really put on a digital basis, uh, that's one of the metrics we look at.
So are you looking, uh, when we go down this bullet points issue that. Those are like.
Those are suggestions for you to think about, and if you've got something else that's really big.
Well, that's what I would, I would just go down this list and I, I would say that, you know, this seems pretty. Those are the things that I would. Like to see and focus on the appointment, try and see block with the region, I don't. There's a big question on. Oh. Yes. Or more at market rate housing needs. That there's a priority for me. Infrastructure needs. Also, I, I don't, you know, I don't know if I could put, you know, the most important thing in here. But. The infrastructure needs. Better fist or building facilities, I think that's something that you should be able to. And years from now, with the net P O C. Way beyond where we're addressing. Housing needs are immediate. I don't even know if we can address it. That sounds, no, no, I know, but I mean, the thing is that changing maps or doing something like that, I think. You've got, that's. That was also, we can solve it, it's also. We can't solve it.
You can enable it.
We forgot, we forgot doing, and it's also, it's a. Quick moving targets since we now have simultaneously two question. Talk about affordable housing. So that also is the, the single thing is that as people move into nicer apartments, they emptied the not as nice apartment. And so the affordable housing kind of keeps revving around. They can count today will be.
Yes.
If they're built.
If they're built.
If they're built, that's all, we approve them.
Yeah.
And then someone else has.
So.
Dr. Okay.
This. Last week, a few of us were at the Southern New York Planning Conference. I presented there with all these. It's about our housing. Very few communities that we deliver. Detail, that's specific, it's such a good data. It is very good data. Great, so we're thinking about like, how many housing? I haven't read the report. Probably suggest you do it. And it's not saying let's capture all the. New years. Or the certain segments, proof, natural demand. Last twenty years, we have. Prepare to put, probably should have region. That by twenty thirty we need. On the region. The man. And, or updating those numbers. Here's the. So, and then, you know, not to get too deep into the housing discussion, but when there's. No more housing at any level, what you see happening is already holding right now the market. Very little out there. People with a lot of money say, there's nothing left at the high end, so let me go start getting stuff at the middle class or upper. And the upper middle class, middle class, sorry, let's now act the, the units that are cheaper and let's buy those all. And then there's nothing left that, or that was even lower case. Then that's when we start watching the numbers. This. Housing prices. Others. Throw short term rentals in there, that certainly is not a major driving factor. Probably around three hundred short term rentals in all of Rock. Correct, so it's a contributing factor, but.
Actually, with a number like that, that's interesting. No, I did not know. Somebody needs to add that up and say, well, how many apartments is that? How many houses is that? That might not be five thousand apartments, and if it isn't, we say, okay, who's going to give?
They said we were a full build out. Approaching it.
I was. I gotta look at downtown Rock and say. They put another thousand people down here in a heartbeat. Just has somebody else.
Have the schools.
If full build out is very relative. Full build out. The, is it, you know, San Francisco, can you build out? And, oh, they changed the zoning, build up. That's probably San Francisco.
If Philadelphia was. The three stories downtown. It's actually. And you don't want to. Then somebody came to the outskirts and said. Do fifty and keep it away from Willie Ben, that'd be okay. Okay, now there's. You have millions of square feet in that pad. This probably just.
And sometimes some exercises that we was almost laying out our maps with Lego bricks, all right? Here's how many units you want to work. Where do you want them to go? Zoning or like that, that's where we can start thinking about that future land use map. And, you know, what can Rock accommodate? What can we accommodate? Does that help structure it? How best to plot track, roads for the. Other structure. Is it? These are the things we wanted to start thinking about. Okay, what's important, how, how can we get this? And build a train station. Bus rescue transit station, all right, there's one. And maybe one. Or with D U T on the long term construction, train station, short term, daddy bus route.
Transportation.
A better train.
Then you know, there's that. That'll be part of the, that'll be part of the P O C D. No, I know, but I want, I want days. I just, this is so.
Issues, you're living in a movie, but all we have are.
Exactly.
Um, what is your?
Yeah, I've only been out. But it's like, there's so many changes. Yeah, at the digital map, you could just refer us somewhere.
But the, the current G I S maps, the current, don't have, we have. It just got published last pre-burn. That's better than that.
That, yeah, but that is not what exists, that's what in two thousand sixteen we wanted to exist. Right, so, so there's some, you know, there's the, the law. No, 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 but that was the base in two thousand sixteen, it sounds like what you're asking for is like, what is currently there now? New recommendation.
I think the plan is to say, you know, how it makes something like that, but we already have lots of housing here where it looks like. That's, that's what, and all this other garbage here.
But yeah, that, no, that was definitely part of, so you can see the main artery streets, what's really next to it.
And you have some new.
And you have some new openings.
Yeah, you absolutely have a whole base mapping of this.
Add all that, oh, we could put up a thirty story apartment down here.
Thirty. Can't go.
He, just very short stories. Once we get into the development of the P O C D, we'll start creating new base maps. Okay, here's a picture of what's here today. And some of that is going to be. Our open space maps, our infrastructure maps, our development map. Then on that future land use map, all right, these areas that haven't been developed or need to be redeveloped. Is done, your knowledge and extensive public input we get from all thirty nine thousand residents of Rockland. What do you think should be there? Something else we all need to. That incredible amount of public input. They say, no, we don't want that, we want this. Go some. How do you then do that?
You look at that. I think about.
We want to be at a higher level.
For example, it's like a fucking dirty, you say, okay, it's all this industrial. And we all know what's happened. They go open. So what was, you know, if we were not. Now, what's actually. But you might say, okay, we're gonna make this housing, make it as high as it wants to go. We might be done. Going to or or so the stamp. So you have your really small things next to in areas. As long as saying something doesn't visit and update on open space. So that would be so helpful.
It it will get there and, you know, it's.
I can't think now. I don't want to wait two years and say, okay, well, this is better, of course. Or, right, or something is important and it's not that difficult.
We can't just change the future land use map.
I think what she's saying is she wants the existing condition.
That's what it sounds like.
That's it. The existing condition. She's looking at this and saying, if it's wrong, it's no, exactly right. This is right. It's not, that's not what you're looking for, I'm looking for what is there, not.
This is the future land use.
That's what this was supposed to be.
I know it's supposed to be, but was it?
It's a goal.
So yeah, existing condition, not really that.
Just what what's our, what we got now. We can see what we.
And it can be good though.
Yeah, I mean, actually, if you look in the beginning of this, you'll see existing conditions, so it's definitely part of the whole process. Might have an old, yeah.
Well, the Dallas is the old.
Right, but but that's where you start, with existing conditions.
Who's trying that?
Oh, the next you said. We did that. You you that, I mean, it seems like. Doing what we wanted to do.
Yes, so the M V C, we've seen some developments coming under that next, eating the antenna, we thought. There are some things that, oh, that's not what we headed in. Dev and who's had some changes to it, you know, we made some amendments to that thing. Pro those. M T C, we just haven't seen a lot of development activity, but.
The zoning.
And that was as a result of the writing.
I mean, it seems to me like some of those things we've done, you've set the date.
You have set.
And hopefully.
No.
That's. I think we need to do again. I don't want that. That's why I I. You know, some of these things I don't know if, because I know that Jeff's always saying the E B, you don't know, it could be this or that. Yes. Employment trends and electric.
Not the trends.
Yeah, it's it's.
Don't have trends. On something. Based on.
What a high level vision could be.
One of the causes always been. Other industrial business.
Maybe that could be something, well, and I don't know.
What is it?
Well, it is, but it but it, you know, we're not going to get that, one of them.
Oh, they don't exist that. I think that's a good change. The US economy.
But maybe we could focus on like wind. I would maybe ancillary to that.
And I know that there's worry about what happens. The fact that we can actually. Bar employment trend out within two or twenty years. Without great talent is something that very few municipalities in the country. The fact that we know. This is where our employment is going at that period of time. And there's a lot of indicators that there is military technology and way things are done. I think there's a pretty good trend going. In the future, but I I think we know what our employment trend will be. For a long time, because there's a lot of land use, just. Based off that, whereas most places are. We're gonna have growth in our business park, that type of. That's one thing that you would mind, the other piece I certainly don't want to forget, we talked about. Resilience and sea level rise. We are also at the same time that we're going to be working. P, working on a climate action. We received some C I P money a couple of years back in. Thousand dollar. Work on climate action. That is going to focus on those goals. In our P O C D, do we want to address the. Climate action and resiliency and sea level rise. You do, we don't have to go too far into. One of the best recommendations we have is do a climate action. That's app. That's going to take some of the pressure off. Issue. And it's also going to be something that all of them want. Fingers on this planning effort.
That's possible. I can update on this. Is this, would you have that or would it?
It has to be developed.
So it has to have it, right? So I could just, I think, oh, dude. The one digital, like it just colors. I mean, I haven't. Even that would be more useful.
Well, I was just saying.
Is that picture an extract from our G I S? Or is that something that?
Well, it was a load of the through it, I saw it so April twenty first.
All of these maps are done utilizing our G I S. Now, we're some of them. Okay, we color coded this differently because you were looking for a certain. Or certain.
Yeah, it it was hard data and it's can be recreated as opposed to a.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes. Yeah, none of this was done with um, pencils and um, onion or onion seeds.
Love those transparent.
I guess just the last item on this, what should transform the projects that should be addressed.
It it they don't.
Reworking roads.
And anything else, yeah.
Of the private partnership. We have one where nineteen thousand have a partnership with E B. Is that something we're constantly working on?
They're part of the company.
Yeah.
That's that.
You be wanting.
Many, many years ago, when I was still employed, a uh, I made a statement about summaries and how the states. Support construction summary. It was almost a different statement.
Yeah.
That it had some input to serve. And everybody always thought, well, you know, this is a dead support for. You're damn right. This, but you know, there's there's many, and. That's where we use systems. The companies that aren't local here, if we find out.
But that's a lie chain, yeah.
Yeah, could potentially be located closer.
Nothing can we do with that site before a lot of that's. The other um. Missing piece in that equation is having the industrial space already built and ready. A lot of these places like, hey, we want to build. Ownings or X. With buildings not there, so now I have to go be a developer, build an industrial building so that I can then be a factory. I'll go to that town that are.
As it was, I think, since back in the day, nowhere built was built with that, nowhere built was built with that. They built building. Who had people to come and put stuff in it, that's what he did. Building that. But a hundred years ago, it seemed like an idea. You have to do, I've never heard of anybody doing that.
Do you see what smaller business parks, smaller light industrial area?
Well, that's what you see.
Find those sites.
Incubator. We've got, we've got a pretty good incubator.
Yeah.
Only could be twice as good.
There's a demand for a lot. People that risk the capital, going through the development process, finding good land that has borders to. You know, the infrastructure.
Is that the use for? You should try to.
It could be, I mean, Thea Mahan was kind of moved forward from Rockland Heights, it didn't work, but then you start getting to. In compatible, these schools is a better useful thing, the versus industry. And those those are things that you all.
The town council. All right. Yeah, mission, mission, my my first meetings with. Property reuse, town property use committee. Three council members. And to me, and two other people, this is a group. They had no idea. They weren't aware of what it did. All these things they want to locate. We got that already. And I have the book here, there here it is. And it was it was news to them, news to them, so. I would do a better job, or maybe you said, if. If we're not going to look at a book. They need the executive summary and he's had a little chart set up there, so. That they need to, they need to have that, so they need to very. Really, because they're not going to be correct, they'll be bringing that shit.
And that's where if we had a goal document, it'll be fifty pages or less. And then hold it, if that's truly a goal, make this a document. So. Look at it. I'm lost.
Well, it might be the the two parts, fifty page or less, here's the four page.
Needing to.
It's the last page, it says.
Well, I'm saying, that's exactly the summary of the front.
That's your prior.
If you want to see more, like the resume, okay, I can look back group H for these states. Terms of recommendations go, I can't remember what we did this before, but the conservation committee, they got head recommend. They took that to be a checklist. For the last few years, they've been saying, okay, we got these done and we want to. For the most part, we haven't been doing that, you say, we've gotten about thirty percent done. Maybe it just needs to be organized that way to say, here's the checklist. Get these things done in the next few years. And here's the blood approach and study. Separate them out. We know what we're supposed to be doing. One of the things I like to see on here, which goes to transportation. Movement of commuters. Is to where they are, big fat arrows up. Where the big. Motion that people are. Which won't even change that that much necessarily. The train station. Yeah, to get up to a thousand people, they even train it, hopefully. But that'll take one chunk out, but if we don't. Nobody gets buses or like, we've done Carter, that's something. They want, I mean, here's how you get. And I can't, you mean like, what's the water you want it down? The state. The status.
It's owned by a private, private developer.
They did sell, maybe still on the plan.
We're actually working out like. In pretty tough shape when there's a patch down. Building has to be.
Having had a direct experience with this.
Tourists inside. Old in this. It's a tough site.
Careful in terms of the public outreach to, what's that? Proper use. Things, one, in terms of what's in the schools, it might get overlap. That one of the things that the proper use committee came up with is that the extremely proactive. Thing. Some portion of the proper use committee that. Do this thing, that's what it was, just any deck now. The missions together, sit down around the round table, say, what's important? Wanting to do this with each property, each school. Initially with every property, but the schools are big. We very quickly can turn around and have a support. But what's the best use of these schools? What a direction of what to do with it is just, this is good, this is better, this is best. Do this, this is a problem, we can knock that out pretty quickly. Rather than wait. Certainly, it's all done, the schools are out there. Page on each one. And so now has changed to. Make this open to change or not open to change. It feel, it feel housing. Then we get to have our. It's available someplace, I think they do theirs, we do ours. Be separate to.
We, at the staff level, communicate with them. For our best.
But the point is to thank them touch. First. Because they rely on our our commercial. There's no grocery store to speak of. In either Mystic or in City of Rockland. Get shot there. Yeah, in terms of the commercial center. City of Rockland is in the town of Rockland.
Yeah.
No. It's what it is.
That's. That analysis.
Oh, I got, I told Mystic. I used to. I need to go see. I don't see the assets.
You have a big line.
We quit. We went once, quite.
They're really invested.
Not quite in this thing. It's fine. You're chopping your car. Yes. But that's a big. But that's something. About. It's a coupon. Oh, I agree with that, so much right about. Yes.
And they were talking about. Not using the existing. Putting it out. More like it, they why or? Yeah, which to me, the case of all purpose. And why?
Well, I mean, no, it's also. As as far as using it for the tourist part of Mystic, I completely agree. I understand the technical issues. Can't have a decent station. Train is on a curve. Hanging at an angle. That's that's the whole issue. Now, if in fact, we you end up with a train station down in Rock, that's really flat. But straight shot, you'd have a major station. We want to commute, that's it.
So you want to dominate the. Art.
It would, and that's a big thing.
Not not. Think of.
Yeah, that's what I will cover. Federal, but it's. Is it possible that in the track that they do a? Work around train, because right now, like looking at the cell. Out of that route. Because we're already reaching your limits. Buys. You think of your trains, your trains, it's the bridges. And so, and look at the cell and how they're once again, after they have. First time, looking again, say, what's our bypass route, and that'll be the route. It's a people a route, if it's just a local route. If you then tear it down, maybe this. Stop it. New area for. You stop.
Yeah.
And each one doesn't necessarily have.
Guys, as we're doing this process that. The data and. Analysis that we have are probably better than ever before, as we're putting these things together. But with that, make sure we don't fall into the trap of paralysis by analysis. And we can't let perfect be the enemy. So we didn't, there are going to be things that, well, I wish I had this data, sorry. Can't get that, you have to make your best available decision, looking at the data. No different than proving a site plan. Wish I knew what that extra one drop of water would do. Just a difference.
I think it's. What we want, right? So it look. We want to look like. Various on the other side of the A of town. Various jammed in. Where we want to eat some local. You know. No, it's a decision, you want to skyscrapers. Under. But they don't. Yeah, no, but you gotta look at. Up to. And on residential areas. We really want to, maybe we should allow. These small stores. Business stores. They're wearing a shirt either. Uh, you know, it's types of things. Like outside. Or even, I think it's right. But we've been, the whole country has been developed. Merchants. People are less. That's post circus. Different, nothing is central. Just spread out rooms.
And the war density we have. Was crazy vertical, just infill type development, allowing. Duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes in these areas that have water sewer that then initiates, oh. Have a the infrastructure. White paths, sidewalks. Start having more commuting patterns. You know, of bus and trucks. But without the density, those things don't exist. But it, but what's that right appropriate is designed in a great way. But I'm overdesigned as a standpoint.
Well, but it has to, we have to allow it. But you don't, I don't think you want to have work as long as that. Built market one eight four and just spread out.
Yeah.
Because it's, that makes it unaffordable. People should have. Two cars, you know, family get around.
I think it's a talent lucky that we have ninety five starts one boundary and then one eighty four starts another. Those are almost your kind of your growth boundary markers, limited infrastructure.
Yeah. You're describing to me that always worked. You know. Nodes and. Or think, I think that's what we were trying to. Hold it right, oh, that's what. And that knowing the model is, I think. A people want. Where you can have a grocery store. And maybe you don't want them on your street, but certainly within a. Or walk with this. Maybe you create nodes within, I mean, I don't know, I'm just, you know.
Resident town center, Columbia town center, either. Where you want to allow for.
Active maybe. Public transport. I don't mind.
No, but you know how those things, I think that's that's a very. And track.
Oh, I think. The old works.
Yeah, but how about if you get a velvet mill? If you get a velvet on this.
Ross, Ross.
Right, why don't we go look for it, and you have the own hat, there is. London.
Oh, you like, but you have one that actually. You have tart, our soul.
We don't have any. There's no food.
Oh, that's.
Matt, Matt.
Yeah. I don't. That's. This education.
I think it's all down with tonight, yeah.
Oh.
And that's the difficult thing. Passing the properties, do some of these things.
Or yeah.
Order four, it's all the committee do it. When it is off one five one. We need to allow the organic change to happen, so. Homeowner can do. What are those? Parts transformative projects I want to address downtown. About that. The ones. Not this group that makes the. What areas to want to do it. We got, we got some time to figure all these out.
I think it was. Other places where this is stored. Second generation. It's about front, front ones, trees. Eighteen foot white house. At the end of each block. It's a place for you to have a commercial.
There's there's.
My apartment was at the end of one. Across the street, you can get candy shop, or you got bagels. Every few blocks. My dentist was one. This is for the small thing. It could be the entire house, or it could just be apartments above. Part of the neighborhood. At the level that is spread out, I think. It became incredibly useful to everybody. It was not put in that, it was just allowed.
And it was developed.
Looking where in the. Their streets. Could we tolerate some of these things? He wasn't. I mean, absolutely, so that it's a mixed. The barber, up in the air down here, and he lives upstairs.
Oh, yeah, that's. But I say, interesting. More developed, but absolutely isn't. We need that three stories. Oh. Words. Have enough to work.
John, could you?
Send.
The uh. It's not. It's on the town website. Yeah. Well, in that, as well as the affordable housing. The arrow. Uh, maps you were talking about how where computers coming from. That's absolute market stuff. Um, our market analysis that we did. Two thousand fifteen ish sixteen has a lot of that same data showing. Since then, before, when I first started marketing, wow, we learned eighty percent of our workforce to get it entered. Now it's eighty two percent. So now we have more percentage. Our employment is going us.
That's what we're trying to do. They track our phones, but they know where you're shopping.
Listen. Well, if you say, I need new pots and pan, when you get home, I'll open the stuff.
Yeah. So it's terrible. Even your own phone.
But yeah, we'll we'll send both links for both those out. And.
And then if I could just make a recommendation that, you know, maybe within the commission here or. You guys come up with the organizations we want input from. Town. And then the commissions. You know. Start saying, okay, let's schedule this. I mean.
No, 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 we're gonna go out. We're going out to them, that's that's. Yeah, asking people to come here is just not effective. So, um. The 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 project we're working on right now is going to develop such. Community groups that we want to, you know. Be person is, and be able to contact them. Um, and essentially have those kind of meetings. Much better.
And a lot of those will be meetings that are led by certain consultants that we need you to attend. Because if we hear all this great input, and you don't hear it. It it it's not going to have the same level of gravity.
One thing they care of in a property reuse, it was like, what most effective thing we thought of. Of all the crazy things, I took, they were in the schools. But how do we get people to come? Because they're not looking at the website, they're not looking at the paper. But a sign up or signs up at the school. Facing each way, they all know where the school is. In the same way that you have a liquor, a liquor license thing. Or something that doesn't quite look so official, they, here's the website you can go to, here's the phone number to call this one. Here's, here's how you get to it. And specific to those schools, and then you'll get those.
Yeah.
That's that's.
Didn't totally go out to those. About some of these ideas, they don't come. Because we had signs up.
Yeah, wasn't it all in the picture?
Yeah. All right, moving on. Have anything? Any pages? Or lights? Or uh. As it drive. Partner complex.
I think that's about that. I don't know how ready.
It's all about that. And then also the. Lights on the athletic.
Yeah.
I know. I didn't have anyone else anymore. That. On or is that?
Just really briefly regarding seasonal regulation. Oh man. Update the references in the zoning. Continue stuff, but. Regularly.
And we have the ASP report.
There's force of the biologicals.
How you can move in right next door.
That's, I think, it's pretty cool. It's name, stencil, yeah, yeah, it's always.
Yeah.
It was.
An old machine child.
Yeah, that's right.
You're in.
Yeah.